Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Hager City Council. This is a special legislative today, 2019. We call this meeting to at 6:00 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green. Mr. Madison.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you. And Ms. Green is excused tonight, Mr. Petrowski.
Yep.
Moving on, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. Excuse me. Um, this evening, we'd like to keep the family and friends of Mr. John Watson, a 33-year employee of the city of Harrisburg, and Mr. DeWitt Butler in our thoughts and prayers. We could please have a moment of silence? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Mr. Allen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to communications. Tonight, we have the presentation of the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. And that's by Ms. French, Sean Ardicus. Um, after then, could you possibly discuss Bill 52?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, council, for an opportunity to present and introduce to you the 2019-2020 Annual Plan. What I'm going to do is take some time out to go over some highlights of the plan and just have some discussion around it. And then I've emailed it to you, but it's also available for the public for comment as well.
Does anyone need a copy?
Does anybody need a copy? Physical copy?
Ooh, I could use our copy. Yeah.
Yeah, we all three.
No, anyone?
No. Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Ms. Daniels, okay.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. Tree, huh?
All right. So this time, the Department of Building and Housing is introducing the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. We've held neighborhood meetings on March 20th and 27th of 2019 just to solicit input from interested subrecipients and the general public. Tonight, we're introducing the 2019-2020 Action Plan for HUD entitlement funds under CDBG home and ESG programs. The 2019-20 Action Plan identifies the use of the funds for the 2019-20 program year, should I state, from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, to implement the goals and priorities outlined in the 2018-2022 Consolidated Plan. All CDBG funds and ESG must assist LMI, low to moderate income individuals and families below the 80% line. We'll be soliciting public comment for 30 days, from July 11th through August 10th of 2019. So in brief, I'm gonna give, I'll share with you a background and a strategy for the future. Our historic approach to community development was to use safe and business-as-usual approach to the utilization of our HUD resources by providing funding to only housing rehab, public services, and some small-scale projects that have yielded minimal impact to our neighborhoods and for our residents. HUD has evaluated our service delivery models and determined that the impact to LMI beneficiaries was nominal and that the city of Harrisburg could and should do better. Therefore, if we're going to effectuate change that demonstrates to our constituents and to HUD a meaningful impact to our residents, we're going to need to change the way we do business in the building, Department of Building and Housing Development. As a result, you will see the goals as outlined in the 2018-2022 Consolidated Plan, which set forth the framework, um, which set forth the goals. But the 2019 Action Plan is actually sets forth the framework for the city to start serving our constituents with a better service delivery system to create greater impact to our neighborhoods and improve the lives of our residents. DBHD, Department of Building and Housing Development, is exploring alternative services, service delivery models that will allow more of the HUD resources to reach our constituents. Now, these changes will be significant considering how we operated in the past. 2019 is just the first instance in the city of Harrisburg and members of city council have been asking for. Some of the new programs include creating new affordable rental and/or homeownership housing opportunities for low to moderate income households, public improvement projects to the city of Harrisburg specifically that could be used for public spaces, streets, or recreational centers, capital improvements to public facilities that benefit low to moderate income individual, individuals specifically focusing on ADA accessibility, and also, again, enhanced service delivery of our public services. The end goal is to improve our neighborhoods and the quality of the lives of our residents. However, this process will take time and to implement and to ensure that we invest in projects that have maximal impact and are in compliance with HUD regulations, rules, and requirements. So my position here is to just assist the city of Harrisburg with implementing these projects and programs and to make sure that we're moving forward, that we spend HUD's funding, we maximize HUD's funding, and make sure that we're always in compliance. With that said, when you, the action plan that you've been given, it gives you some of the, summarizes the objectives and the goals. But I'm going to describe because I believe that also that we've been asked questions about program descriptions and eligibility of use of the CDBG funds as defined by HUD. CDBG funds, three of the things that HUD looks for in spending CDBG funds are programs that funds public facilities and infrastructure improvement projects, assist low to moderate income households via homeownership housing repairs, that's current homeowners, provide public services with an emphasis on youth and senior enrichment programs, employment service after-school programs, and assisting special needs populations. I should mention also with public services that there is a specific, that all public services must either, this is according to HUD, they must either be a new service or demonstrate a quantifiable increase in the level of services. That's what makes eligibility for public services according to HUD.
Amy, you say identify the public services.
Quantify.
When you say identify, what in particular are they looking for under that?
Under public services? Well, we haven't identified specific programs yet, but I wanted to make it clear that these are what HUD is looking for. Again, they prefer that we use, that public service programs emphasize youth or senior enrichment programs, as I mentioned, employment, assisting special needs populations. And if you'd like, I'll be glad to provide a copy of the eligibility. Also gives you details on what the categories are that are considered special needs. But like I said, all public service dollars must, and programs selected, must be either a new service or a quantifiable increase in the level of service within the last 12 months.
Okay. Yeah, can we have a copy of that, please?
Absolutely. May I submit this for?
So that identifies whether they are eligible or not eligible, right?
Yes, that's correct. Now, with home, historically, city of Harrisburg primarily focused on low to moderate income households with homeownership housing repairs. Also, with home, you should look for funds to develop affording housing or rental housing opportun, opportunities via new construction or rehab of vacant structures. Also with home, you can have the home dollars, you can explore creating first-time home buyer, down payment assistance programs or the like. Now, there's not, we've been doing very well with emergency solutions grants, the ESG funding, because it must be used to address homelessness and at-risk homeless populations. It must emphasize, emphasis on shelter operations, outreach, homeless prevention, and rapid rehousing services. And you must show that you work with a consortium of care to identify the projects that you fund. So that gives you a brief outline with eligibility. I just wanted to make sure we shared that information. Now, also, if you refer to page of the action plan, if you also refer to page seven, the middle of page seven, it also captures, it also captures activities that were mentioned in the previous consolidated plan that were concerns of the community. And also on page two of the action plan, you can see the goals as listed, that were listed in the 2018 Consolidated Plan. So I'm not going to bore you with those details, but I just wanted to identify where they are. So now, let's move forward to the budget. Go to the budget, pages 25 through 31. Begins there. I'm just gonna go over it briefly, and if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. Now, CDBG funding totaled this year at $1,938,354. Thirty thousand dollars of that is the public expect program income.
What page are you?
You start the wrong page number. And we mentioned it earlier. I'm sorry, I gave you the old, yeah, I gave you the right page numbers. Yep, I was on the right page, I'm sorry. Pages 30. Page 30 is where it starts, expected resources, AP 15.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Twenty-five kind of gives you overview, starting on page 25, it gives you an overview of those goals and objectives that gets down into the dollars on page 30.
Okay.
Should mention that the total budget, again, is $1,938,354,000. With $30,000 of it as expected program, we'll see in the chart there. $387,670 is granted. I need to mention that dollars are set forth by HUD. HUD be at 20%.
Right, you knew that.
Okay? $593,423 are debt service.
And that's to the David Dodd loan.
The Dodd loan, yes, correct. Which is, as you can see, a big chunk of our funding.
It is.
I would like to mention that we have recently refinanced that so we would have, not have a variable rate, but a fixed rate so that we can better budget year to year. Because we were under-budgeting year to year on that.
Oh, okay.
Also, we have $100,000 to public services, $407,261 to public improvement and public facilities with a focus on ADA accessibility, $1,000 to home rehab, homeowner rehab, and $200,000 to demolition. So let's start with a few things. Demolition, we gave us an increase in funding this year from $125,000 last year to $200,000. Because all of our, all of the comments said that that was a great need. Regarding housing rehab, although it seems like it's a lesser amount, instead of using home and CDBG dollars that we have not always spent year to year, after doing an evaluation, analysis of how many units we're able to get done year to year, we did $250,000 in home rehab, housing, homeowner rehab, $407,000 is for public improvement and public facilities, as I mentioned, and $100,000 in public services.
Okay.
Okay?
So your $100,000, and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
$100,000 for public services, you're talking about the subrecipients?
Subrecipients, CDBG funding, that's correct.
So $100,000 for all the subrecipients?
It sounds like, it doesn't sound like a lot, is what you're saying, dollars?
Yeah, because we're inclusive about.
Right, but again, an evaluation determined two things, that we were using that funding and we, we were funding public facilities projects for nonprofits when it should have been under, it should not have come out of public service dollars. It should have been identified as public facilities. So all we did is move some of those dollars, based on our analysts, to the public improvement, public facilities. So, so it can be properly identified.
So we can use money from the $407,000 for public facilities for the nonrecipients?
Yes.
I mean, subrecipients?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
We will be doing RFPs for all of them, for public services. We're gonna re-RFP them because, again, we have to make sure that we communicate to those applicants. We streamline the application process, A. We also have to make sure that we communicate to those applicants what are eligible projects. And we don't believe that we, it is fair to the subrecipients in past how we've been communicating, we haven't communicated that. So therefore, we tend to get applications that we may or may not fund, that ultimately, we have a funding because we may not have eligible, eligible costs or may have ineligible costs. So I think it's wise, at this point, to re-RFP it, change, give a more comprehensive scoring process, and also help the subrecipients pick and choose projects that are actually eligible for funding.
So are the applicants that you did receive, did anyone qualify or they did not qualify because they did not identify what they were going to use under public services?
Well, that wasn't, there was two challenges with the applications. Properly identify these specific CDBG funds. The second challenge that seemed to appear over and over is that, and it's not the subrecipients' fault, I need to disclose that, that they were not able in their application to demonstrate, as I said in the CDBG rule, that they either are a new service or demonstrate a quantitative increase over the last 12 years for services. And it's not their fault, because we did not have that in the application or the RFP.
So at this point, those individuals that we did allocate money to over the last several years, will they be responsible for repaying any of that monies because we did not put them under the right category?
Well, right now, and I'm working with-
Or utilized the right funding?
Right. Right now, I'm working with HUD on those that we've gotten as ineligible costs, on working with re-identifying the money. And so if we said it was public facilities and we listed it as public services, we're requesting that we re-identify it so that we don't, are not at risk of having to pay any of that funding back.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have a follow-up question, I guess, about the-
I didn't want you to go ahead and we had-
About the included in the application, but how would a recipient applicant share that information?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna actually streamline the application and make it much easier. And we're gonna also, in the RFP, on the scope of work, we're gonna be much more detailed about what makes a project eligible.
Okay.
And I think that's, and then also the meetings that we're gonna have about that, we're gonna have at least two meetings when the RFP comes out so that subrecipients can get assistance or, you know, ask the questions they have at that time around the application.
Okay.
Now, my other question, my other question is that the applicants have already put their applications in. So you're gonna do this over a time period before what date?
We, our goal and objective is to have it completed by the end of August, have the RFP.
With the 30-day to the public for public comment, and then after that?
The RFP does not require public comment.
Okay, okay, fine.
No, it does not. We can set that up to seven to 10 days, put it out there, and then have the meeting scheduled, and have the meetings and say that the applications are due this time. I really am excited about the opportunity to talk to all the subrecipients, make sure that they're aware and we can all be on the same page and answer any of their questions so that they know, they, they'll know ahead of time if the project they're considering applying for, if it's eligible or not. They don't have to wait until it's awarded. We can actually try to do something, talk to them about that and make sure we have full information that we require from HUD for the application process.
Mr. Majors.
So I guess, part of my concern is, oh, can we get a list of the, the timeline that we're under that we need to get back to by, what, August 20?
The timeline I just mentioned her is just my own, our own departmental goal.
Okay.
Okay?
Information that needs to be submitted to HUD, because we, we came back for this meeting so that we could-
Right.
Have this open up the third.
That's correct.
When does, when does the information, does all that information include what the sub, that all has to be presented to HUD by when?
No. Okay, there's two separate things.
All right, so give me the timelines.
No worries.
This is, this is where my confusion is, because there's a couple of different timelines, and if I can get the timelines, it'll help level set, I think, everybody's-
As far as the subrecipient funding, public services, that's what we typically, that's what it's used for, public services. What we're asking here is that we, $1,000 for that. That's what we need to get to HUD, to tell them we're spending, we don't have to, as part of this 30-day comment period and this deadline we have for August 15th, we do not have to say to HUD, these are who we're awarding it to. Because being frankly, HUD doesn't really care about it. They don't want to know how you're spending the high level. They want to know are you going to use it, loan, debt repayment, public service, how much you're going to use it.
Okay.
And that's what this is doing.
Okay, so the 8/15, August 15 deadline is just macro level. These are the pots of money that we're going to have.
That's correct.
They don't necessarily care about who that money goes to at that point. It just says X amount of dollars is going to this, this, and this. Okay.
That's correct.
Then what's the deadline for them to, for, because that's a significant reduction of what we used to spend for subrecipients.
Well, again, it may appear like it's a reduction, but all we have done is properly, we put $100,000 in public service. And then because we were funding some public facilities dollars out of that pot of public services, which is not the right pot, was not how you correctly identify it, we put some of that back into public facilities. So for example, I can give you an example. If, for example, I'm gonna use Ms. Fuss.
Okay.
That's not a public service. And they have been applying under public service.
Okay.
It's actually a public facility dollars.
Okay. So then, are there any public facilities dollars that are going to be used for subrecipients?
$407.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
I just want to, okay.
Okay?
So, all right.
Does that answer your question, councilman?
That's, but what, when does the public?
I would like to RFP it.
Okay.
We have a departmental goal, and this is a departmental goal. We would like to RFP for public services, public improvement and facilities, as well as rehab, and we didn't get to that, new housing development, August, by the end of August.
Okay. Okay.
But they will all be RFP, so it's be very transparent to everyone.
Okay. So essentially, all subrecipients would have to reapply through this new process?
That's correct.
Okay.
But we're gonna help them identify, when we have those meetings, if their project is a public service or is it a public facility? Because right now, there seems to be some confusion in that.
Okay.
And we have been awarding them all as public facilities.
Okay.
I mean, services, I'm sorry.
And that's why, that's why my question to you over the last several years, we've done that, is there, are we in compliance with HUD by doing that? Is there anything from HUD saying that we have to repay any of that money that we've given the subrecipients for services like public facilities that we utilize out of public services?
Right now, we don't have a letter from HUD that says we have to repay.
Okay.
We have a letter saying we have to justify it or make corrective action. So that's what we're working through now with HUD. Because I've actually, we've actually asked for, we have two items, two pots a month, well, two subrecipients, for example, receive funding under public facilities. We're just asked, under public service, which should be identified and allocated as public facilities, we're asking for that reallocation to be in compliance.
Okay.
Okay? So this just helps us in alignment and being in compliance, okay? And to make sure that we have the pots of money identified properly.
Yeah, because I don't want to give any money back.
Uh, no, I don't.
I think because they've taken from the public services and some of the subrecipients will not, will not be able to help them this year.
We understand.
So that's a concern of mine.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
On this part?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Bowers?
Okay, so I have a few. So, this is my first one, so please bear with me. The OMB number, the control number at the bottom, it's like the footer on every page. It says, the expiration date is June 30th, 2018.
That's the document number of HUD.
What is that?
This is HUD's document number.
Okay, so that's, that's not another one else?
OMB control number identifies to HUD what form this is and what it is.
Okay, okay. So that's, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. On page 37, you outlined the process that the department went through in order to identify, I guess, the subrecipients from the application process, the review panel.
I'm sorry, I can't, I'm sorry, say again.
It's on page 37, under Describe the Reasons for Allocation Priorities. It's like the third sentence. You mentioned that the city received a dozen applications. The city convened a review panel, composed the city personnel and a member of a nonprofit organization to review and score the applications. So with that, will you undergo the same panel and the same score process? Or will everything be different?
We are actually, we're modifying our scoring process to capture the things that HUD requires to make things, make it eligible for whichever category, public facilities, public services.
Okay.
So we are modifying the application, but we absolutely will still have a committee for scoring process. On RFPs, we do that.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. And then, I think it was on page three, the evaluation of past performance. I think we sort of noted it with the quantifiable increase. How is that related to HUD?
So what are you asking me about?
The evaluation of past performance? Oh, page two, it's number three, sorry.
Page two.
Number three.
How do we know? Our past performance is evaluated by HUD.
That's not shared. Okay.
Okay.
I didn't know if something was to be included in that section or not.
Not, not at this time.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, I guess, for this question.
When you say you're, the panel, a committee, who is the committee? I know you said one subrecipient as a member of that committee, but who's?
In the past, in the past, it was the program manager that managed it out of the department. Hillary Green, of the procurement department.
Okay.
And then you could pick, we usually pick another employee that's not in the department that would have, you know, not in the department just so we can have someone who's a very non-biased committee member. And I'm very open. We haven't, you know, we have not decided who this committee is. We don't, we decide it as the RFPs come available. And if anyone's interested in being on the scoring committee, they can let us know. Okay, great.
I am.
Good, all right. I'll make sure we note that and we'll have you as a committee scoring member.
Okay.
You mind if I continue? Any more questions?
Sure, sure, I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. All right, so thank you for all the questions on those areas. I hope I've identified them and answered them for you. Also, now, when you move forward the home budget, I just want to say that's $432,187. That also administrative budget is set by HUD at 10%. So therefore, the grant administration dollars are $43,218. We are, we would like to earmark $300,000 to new housing development to develop six affordable homeownership or rental unit opportunities via new construction or rehab. And the last one is, the remainder of those funds, we have a relationship with Tri County who has submitted a request for support for the Mount Pleasant Homes development project. And so we, the remainder of those funds of $88,969 would assist them to, on that project. The Mount Pleasant Homes project is on 15th Street. Okay?
Who's doing the grant administration this year? The city, maybe?
We must.
Okay.
The department, because we are actually the recipients of the funding.
Right, right.
So the regs say that we must do the grant administration.
Okay, because there, well, there was a term that they gave that.
Yeah, we are not allowed to do that.
Okay.
We're not allowed to do that to the, we're not allowed to pass on that cost to the-
They used to do in the past, they used to allocate that to someone else, okay?
Yeah, we are not allowed to do that anymore.
So we will, we will be handling that funding part.
We will.
The grant administration.
The grant, the grant administration is the Department of Building and Housing. The grand, the grand administration is the Department of Building and Housing, that's correct. E S G, no changes there, primarily, it's pretty much the same. As you're already aware, cash is our partner there. I want to mention, though, that the seven point five percent, again, is the grant administration cost on that. You have the breakdown of how cash uses the funds. Asset, as we mentioned, that is a priority of HUD. We have ninety-eight thousand, seven forty-five for shelter operations, for rapid rehousing, forty-two thousand, thirty dollars, and for the H M I S system, which is the homeless, I'm going to get it wrong. It's the system for intake that HUD likes you to be able to support, so they can get the beneficiary information, that's thirteen thousand dollars, okay? So, what I'm, what we'd like to ask is that council shares with your constituents. We will be having a, a, a public hearing, DBHD will actually be having a public hearing on July thirty-first, at the Hamilton Health Center, at six o'clock. The action plan is available online. It's available, hard copies are available here. And at the front desk, as well as the department, there's going to be, you can always submit, we have forms if you want to submit a written, a written comment to us regarding it. You can also, my information is also available. You could even send it, your comments by email as well, okay? Just want to mention again to everyone that the comment period will end August the tenth. And that helps councilmen, that's so that we can get those comments back, we can implement them in the action plan, and get it submitted, and you guys come on, I guess, on about the thirteenth?
Not that we want to.
I know, but I need to get it invited fifteenth of August.
No, we know, we know.
So that helps you with that, those timelines, councilmen, majors, okay?
Yes.
We'll be back on the thirteenth. Okay.
Just one other quick question. So for, I guess, I'm on page forty-one, it's project number five. It's a demolition and blight removal. It looks like we're going to do two hundred thousand dollars for, it says five buildings.
Well, what happens with HUD, you want to say, you don't want to say you're going to do twenty, and you don't have enough money. So what I, I talked to codes, and some of the projects, some demolitions can be twenty to thirty thousand dollars, some can be a lot less. So that's saying the minimum.
Okay.
That's the minimum that we're going to do.
All right, okay, I was just making sure, because we've allocated less and done more, so I was just-
And we very well could, but it depends on the demolition cost.
Okay.
And it's always good with HUD, if you say, hey, this is what we're doing, but we do more than that, that's always great.
So the Department of Public Works Director would determine our-
Codes.
No, it's codes.
Who would determine what buildings that we, we take down this time?
Codes, codes-
That's what I'm saying, codes.
Codes manages that, however, we have to approve all of them.
Yeah, codes, yeah, codes has their demo list, and then there's emergency demolitions that occur, and there's-
Codes maintains the list, and uses public works to actually do the demolition.
So all we do is, we, they have to submit it to us to review it, to make sure it's eligible, it falls under eligibility. Except for party walls, yes.
Well, my question is, you take down that house, there is a jointed house, so what do you do as far as that wall?
Well, the good news is, we've developed a partnership with codes. So if they can't use demolition dollars, we can look to see if we have other CDBG dollars that we use for housing rehab. And if the client is eligible under LMI, we actually would do the party wall. We would do the party wall, and then they would go on and do that.
And I know they've also worked with outside contractors, when it's, when it's been a demolition that has those party walls, so that they can contract with them to make sure that the individual that's in the house that's occupied does not have any damage to their, yeah.
Yeah, and so we've partnered with them in a couple cases already, where we, if the client is eligible through the LMI, their household meets the LMI requirement by HUD, then we can actually use CDBG dollars to help with that.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other questions, councilmembers? All right, we'll have quite, quite a few when we come back.
That's fine, I appreciate it. You can email me, call me at any time.
Sure, we haven't had an opportunity to really look through the-
I understand.
But we will.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Can you, before you go, please, can you also discuss Bill fifty-two?
It's a resolution.
The resolution, I'm sorry.
Oh, resolution to fifty-two.
It's a resolution ratifying a professional service agreement with YAG.
Oh, yes, okay. The city of Harrisburg is considered a high need city, according to HUD, when it comes to lead hazardous reduction opportunities and lead, lead abatement.
Okay.
They've just recently, they just recently submitted a NOFA, as you are aware, for us to have the opportunity to apply for over four point two million dollars of lead funding. So, I will tell you, okay, because we actually, the lowest we can eligible for is four point two million, and the highest we can actually apply for is nine million. And HUD has only allowed a few weeks from the date of the NOFA, I think the NOFA came out a week or two ago, and it's due August the sixth. We do not have the internal capacity to do such a large grant by ourselves in the department. Therefore, we're asking, we RFPed, we did an RFP for grant writing assistance, YAG LLC. We did enough, this, we did another RFP, and YAG won the RFP, and we really need their support in order to be able to apply for those funding. If we are eligible for, if we make the grant, not if, I'm sure we will. I'm confident that we will get awarded the grant, if the maximum of nine million, we will have actually grant funding, lead abatement funding for five years. This is the first opportunity for that, and I've been doing lead work for almost ten years, and this is the first opportunity that I've seen such a large availability of funds. So we're asking for your consideration on that bill. Any, any specific questions around that, around this, this grant application?
So we don't know how much, we don't know how much the grant is going to be. It's between four point five and nine.
Four point two million to nine million.
Okay.
That's correct.
I'll just, you know, council may remember this was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. At that time, in reviewing the RFP process, we discovered that there were, there was an error in how the grading and scoring of that RFP had been done. So we decided to reissue the RFP, and that's why we pulled it from the agenda a couple of weeks ago. New RFP was done, new scoring, and YAG was selected, and with no issues this time. It, it had also been selected before, but given the scoring error, we wanted to, to do it again.
Yes.
But that pushed us back two weeks or so, and is why we were on a tight schedule to get this done by. And of course, at the last meeting, council authorized the application, so this is, this is to allow us to-
And the nine million is new information from HUD. They sent it to us as part of a webinar this week, last week.
Oh, okay, okay. Any questions, councilmembers? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, council.
Thank you. All the information, thank you.
Oh, should I say for this one too?
Mine as well.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, at this time, I'll open up the mic to anyone, I'm starting at my right, and in the middle.
Less four, twenty thirty-three Bellevue Road. I would like to thank the administration and city council for responding to this crisis. I do not believe the crisis is over. If anything, I can say that I'm more confused than ever, but I assume that there is a solution to this, and I assume that we have the resources in this city to reach that solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone to my left? Thank you. Moving on to approval minutes, councilmembers. Approved the legislative session minutes of July second, two thousand nineteen. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Thank you, here are none minutes, stand as approved. Moving on to reports of committees, we have none this evening. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, we have none. Moving on to Bill two, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Bill two of two thousand nineteen was moved by Mr. Madison, second by Ms. Bowers. It's an ordinance appropriating community development block grant program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, and authorizing expenditures of such funds.
That will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Bill three of two thousand nineteen.
Bill three of two thousand nineteen was moved by Mr. Madison, second by Ms. Bowers. It's an ordinance appropriating emergency solutions grant program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
That also will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Bill four, two thousand nineteen.
Bill four of two thousand nineteen was moved by Mr. Madison, second by Ms. Bowers. It's an ordinance appropriating home investment partnership program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
That also will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, we have none. Resolutions? Resolution fifty-one, two thousand nineteen.
Resolution fifty-one of two thousand nineteen was moved by Mr. Madison, second by Ms. Bowers. It's a resolution approving the fiscal year two thousand nineteen community development block grant program, CDBG, home investment partnership program, home and emergency solutions grant program, E S G, along with the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty annual action plan.
That also will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to, we have Resolution fifty-two, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. I move to add Resolution fifty-two, two thousand nineteen, to our agenda for vote.
We have a motion by Ms. Bowers to move Resolution fifty-two on the agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Please call the vote.
I'll read it in.
I'll read in the record, I'm sorry, we didn't read into your-
That's right.
Resolution fifty-two of two thousand nineteen was moved by Ms. Bowers, second by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution ratifying a professionals, professional services agreement with YAG Properties LLC for the purpose of preparing a comprehensive grant application to HUD's Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes, and provide technical assistance related to the program.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution fifty-two passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to all business councilmembers, any of business? New business councilmembers? Okay, no, no new business? Okay. Have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting is officially adjourned.